Seven o'clock and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, roll call please.
Councilmember Canfield is absent. Councilmember Chambers is absent as well. Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. First-
Motion to support the absence of Marty and Greg.
Second.
Alright. Motion to the second. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. They're excused this time. Motion to approve the consent agenda tonight.
I make that motion.
And I'll support.
Yes. Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield is absent. Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent.
Alright. Citizen discussion of items not on the agenda? No? Alright, whole business. Number four, letter A rules of procedure, Mike.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I did clarify the item from the last council meeting regarding call-in votes. Under the statute, you are legally allowed to do it under the following conditions. If you have a quorum-
Without the calling?
Yeah, a quorum without the calling. If you have an audio connection to where the individual can be heard and communication can be made back to that individual through the communication system, which in our case, I believe we have a phone that we can connect right up-
Okay.
-that shouldn't be an issue. But that's up to you if you want to take that off or keep it on. You don't have to change anything to be a one.
I don't have really a preference either way. It's not been an issue almost ever. I think we can leave it in.
Good.
In case we have something that needs to go 4-1 instead of 3-2.
Okay.
I don't know. Nobody here is going to take advantage of it. I don't think so. I don't think it's a problem to leave it in if you guys don't have a problem with it.
I'm fine leaving it.
Okay. That's one. Is that the only change from?
That was the only one.
Alright. Item B is the showboat change order for Marin Iron Works.
Attached is a change order pertaining to the construction of the Lowell Showboat. As you recall, there was an issue pertaining to the height on the O2 deck of the wheelhouse. The attached order is for the time and material to make the proper corrections to the vessel. The cost of the proposed change order is $39,421.80 and will be charged from the showboat grant. This is an increase of the total project cost by 2.6 percent. Since the time I wrote the memo, I had confirmed with Marin Iron Works, the total cost to, for the performance bond previously was just over $18,000. Of that $18,000, $5,000 was paid to set aside to put the deed agreements in place that we did for the waiver system we put in place. So they've already previously knocked off about, they're just under $13,000 in the total price, total project costs already prior to this change order. So it was already taken into account before this change order took place. So if you really want to look at it, it's probably about, the $39,000 is probably about 27. So I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the change order for construction of the Lowell Showboat at a cost not to exceed $39,421.80.
Were you waiting for a motion to approve that?
No, I had. Do we, we caught it in time, right before the steel was-
Cut, yeah. Yes, yeah. This is actually, I had anticipated that the change order would probably have been higher even with them just-
Kind of too.
Well, there was some pretty outrageous-
Yeah.
Anything from 10 to 100,000 if I recall correctly-
Correct.
-being added around.
Correct. No, I thought, I anticipated it being much higher.
And this is coming out of the funding from the state?
Correct.
I guess that the-
Correct, correct.
I think we have to do it. I mean, we can't hold up the whole boat for a couple of feet in the ceiling clearance. So I'll make that motion that we approve the change order at a cost not to exceed $39,421.80.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on it? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And I'm going to explain my vote. The reason that I'm voting for it is because I want the project to move ahead as quickly as possible. I know there's people that want to point a finger and find somebody to blame, but when Lou Dogastino got up and told us that he's been there from the get-go and there really isn't a clear blame. And when the boat builders aren't at fault because they make boats to various heights. I've been on boats and they don't have eight or 10-foot ceilings all the time. So that's why I'm voting to get it done.
And Councilmember Chambers and Canfield are absent.
Alright. New business, letter A is the light and power board compensation for 2020. Steve?
Good evening. As I have done the past couple of years, section 16.1 of chapter 16 of the city charter requires the city council to set the Lowell Light and Power Board compensation for the coming annual year. For the past six years, 2014 through 2019, the Lowell Light and Power Board compensation has been set at $35 per meeting. We meet once a month, typically the second Thursday of every month. Because there hasn't been an adjustment to the compensation for the previous six years and due to the fact that Light and Power Board meetings routinely take a minimum of two hours, most of the time they're at least three hours, it's my recommendation to bump that compensation up to $45 per regular, regular or special meeting with a not to exceed about $900 for an annual year.
Got it.
And just to clarify, this comes from the Lowell Light and Power checkbook?
It does. Lowell Light and Power budget.
I assume that. I just wanted to make it clear on the record.
Correct.
Alright, well, I think it's about time to raise that. I think you go over three hours a lot, don't you?
We've gone from 6:00 to 11:30, I think, in the past year. So nice five and a half hour meeting.
And I know you guys do a lot and you deserve it. I know there's a lot of cool stuff going on over there. So for those reasons, I will recommend that we up the yearly cover of the hand meeting compensation for board members to $45 not to exceed $900 a year.
And I'll support.
Any other questions for Steve? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers and Canfield are absent. And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. Back to Steve for the Light and Power Board pension approval, MERS contribution.
Alright. This item relates to Lowell Light and Power's MERS hybrid plan. For those of you who do not know, I'll kind of give a little bit of a history lesson that I didn't describe in the memo. Initially, Lowell Light and Power employees for years were on the B4 defined benefit pension plan. The board made the decision in 2012 for all new hires to be hired into a hybrid plan. That's like your defined contribution 401K-type plan and then a defined benefit plan. The defined benefit plan, the benefits were just reduced compared to the defined benefit that would have been offered previously. However, since 2012, the underfunded status of our defined benefit plans in total have continued to increase. MERS essentially just hasn't been able to get the market returns that they projected in their actuarial assumptions. And so our funding status of our defined benefit plans, since I've been working at Lowell Light and Power, has gone from 77%, 78% all the way down to 64%. So to stop the bleeding, for the last year, the Lowell Light and Power Board just tasked me with what can we do? And so we've talked with certified financial planners. They've recommended that an employee saves 15% of their gross income in retirement savings so they can someday retire. We've looked at what other municipal electric utilities contribute to defined contribution plans for retirement programs. And at the January Lowell Light and Power Board meeting, they did make the decision for all new, or they're recommending to the council for all new hires to start a defined contribution plan with a base contribution of 9%, regardless of what an employee chooses to contribute, and then they'll match up to an additional 3%. So ultimately, Lowell Light and Power is willing to put in 12% into a D.C. plan for employees if the employee puts in 3%. And if the employee puts in zero, Lowell Light and Power will still put in nine. So the intent is to stop the bleeding, no long-term legacy costs, but still design a plan that's attractive for new hires, looking, you know, to work at a municipal electric utility. The provisions of the defined contribution plan are equivalent to the provisions of the defined contribution plan in the hybrid plan. I laid out a few of those. It's a five-year vesting period and employees, if they choose to contribute, can contribute between 1 and 15% of their gross wage. At this moment, if adopted by council, it would only be for non-union employees. We're starting bargaining with a union in February. It's the hope and intent for the union to adopt the same plan for new hires going forward. But we wanted to at least get this done for any non-union employees that we may have to hire in the near future. So, Jim?
Steve, how does this help you then get up to 100% fully vested for all your other retirees down the road?
This really doesn't.
Doesn't?
It doesn't do that. It just ensures that any new hire, we will not have a legacy cost for. We don't have to worry about MERS-
25 years.
25 years from now, meaning, you know, their new 7.35%, assuming the rate of return, if people live longer than they thought. So we don't have this unknown legacy cost in the future.
Mr. Mayor, just to add, one thing it does do though is by doing this, it does begin the process of reducing the future liability. Your costs are going to go up with, by doing this because there is a, there is an additional cost to close a plan. But what it does do though is it will, that liability over time will slowly diminish. Where if you just kept it going, the liability just keeps going up and up.
Mayor, the board's happy that this is the best option?
Uh huh.
Okay.
We're still addressing, you know, the 15%. We'd love, we'd love to have current employees that wanted to get on it to be able to get into it. Does it just, you know, we keep hearing from MERS what it's going to, what their return rate is, and every year it's not what they anticipated. And so you're, you're held hostage by them. This way, you're no longer being held hostage. Employees and the company can put together a good package that knows that that money will be there when they retire.
This will be competitive to bring in-
It will be. In fact, I think this plan for a lot of the new workforce, people coming out of college is more attractive. You don't see employees sticking around for decades on end with the same employer. People change jobs more frequently. You know, this, this plan has like more of like a 401K. They can bring this money with them like any person in the private sector. So-
And they have to be there for five years? If they leave at 4.5, then Lowell Light and Power retains everything that they put in?
They have two years to find another MERS employer to gain vesting status. So it's not an immediate forfeiture of the employer contribution. But with our defined benefit plan, it's 10-year vesting period, all or nothing. So this cuts that vesting period in half. Obviously, the vesting period is nice because it helps keep people-
Right.
-at the same point, if the new hire doesn't want a DP plan, you know, it actually may not be attractive for some, they know they're not going to be there for 10 years. So the retirement's almost worthless.
Correct.
Alright, then I'll look for a motion to approve the Light and Power Board's recognition for the new defined contribution adoption agreement.
I will make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other questions for Steve? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
I have confidence in the board and Mr. Donkersloop, working members, so I will vote yes.
Councilmember Chambers and Canfield are absent. Mayor DeBoer?
Yes, for Cliff's reasons.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Alright, Dan's turn. Item C is the well, number four, pump overhaul addition.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If you recall, at December 2nd meeting, we discussed overhaul of pump number four, Lowell well. That's the last remaining original well from when they were put in. Come to find out, I wasn't, I didn't know this at the time, but it's one of our main workforces of the system. So over time, they're taking care of the other ones and not experiencing any issues with this one. But we had some concerns, had some concerns when they decided it was time to take it out. While the concerns are there, they pulled it out. They found that the column was so rusted up, they had to cut it off to get it, to get it apart. And then they found that the bowl assemblies themselves are just corroded that can't be reworked and need to be replaced. The cost for that is $3,662 for the column and $4,800 for the bowl assembly. But then they found also that all the plans and everything says it's a 50-foot system and it's really 60. So there's a need to add 10 feet of material for that, which would be the coupling and shaft and additional 10 feet of the column pipe. So that brings the total extra cost to $9,633.74 when added to what was approved before. It comes to just over $29,500 to rehaul pump, or well number four of the pump system on that. The water plant personnel were concerned that this might be the case. That's why they budgeted $40,000 for this work. One nice thing is the motors have been greatly changed. There's not much-
Are you still well under the-
Yes.
Budgeted money? Alright. Any questions for Dan?
And what's the longevity of, they think another 40 years, Dan?
Yeah, we hope to, but I would think over time, 40 years, we should be, probably in 10 years, probably be pulling it, observing it, cleaning it, making sure things are still working well. I think it's pretty nice for 40 years.
Yeah, I'm in the wrong business. A 10-foot of quarter-inch steel line, $67. Did that cost labor too or was that just the material?
Yeah, this is everything. This is the materials of the footing back there.
You don't want to work outside anyway.
No, I just want to sell them.
Oh. Alright, well, we got 40 years out of it, right?
Right, exactly.
So we might as well fix it right and still pulling everything back up in 10 years because we didn't do it. And I'm assuming we're saving on labor and doing it all at once anyway?
Well, yeah, that's all included into that. I'll be there.
Alright, I will make the motion then that we approve the change quote for the additional work at a cost of $9,633.74.
And I'll support.
Any other questions for Dan? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers and Canfield are absent. Mayor DeBoer?
Yes, because I'm glad we're doing it right.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes, because we're doing it right and we're under projected budget.
And yes.
Thanks, Dan. Back to Mike for item number D, the 990 North Washington property.
The city has been renting the house located at 990 North Washington to Sandra Bartlett and Gary Dietzel since 1979. Their lease is set to expire on June 30th, 2020, which was a 10-year lease. Currently, they pay $450 a month to rent the property located in Virgens Township and the home resides on three acres. I don't understand what the justification was to rent the property for all these years. That said, the city needs to decide what we would like to do with the property and if we want to renew the lease. I've discussed this property with our assessor, who happens to be the assessor for Virgens Township, and I've learned that the property has not been assessed properly. Currently, only the house has been assessed when in actuality, the house and the entire three acres of property should have been. The taxable value on the property currently is $11,282. And the city paid $541.48 in taxes during the current fiscal year. In actuality, the three parts, three-acre parcel has a true cash value of $128,500, meaning the taxable value should be $64,250. When you calculate the non-homestead tax rate of 47.5802 mils, the annual tax to the property should be $3,057.3. According to the assessor, this will change in the 2021 tax year. In addition, when I arrived, first arrived in 2016, our insurance carrier informed us they believe there were a number of building code issues that needed to be updated. One item of particular concern to that was the wood burning stove that heats the home. In my opinion, the property and home are not in need of the city. We don't have a use for it. That said, Mr. and Ms. Bartlett and Mr. Dietzel have lived there since 1979. It is not, also not a good practice for municipalities to be landlords. When the city assessor and I reviewed this, the parcel could be split into three properties in accordance to Virgens Township zoning requirements. The assessor states the minimum parcel size for each lot is 17,000, 17,000 square feet in their township. The assessor stated it is possible for the properties to be sold individually. The parcel the home resides on could be sold for the highest amount. The second parcel could be sold for approximately $25,000. And the third parcel, which would be wooden and abuts the property at Scout Park, would be significantly less. You might want to merge these properties with Scout Park. Another option might be, which could be a better option, being the fact you've lived there for 40 years, is to have the building official verify the cost to bring the home to code. This should cost more than the value of the house. According to the city attorney, this would satisfy the Michigan constitution requirement of selling the property at fair market value. This would allow us to split the parcel the home and septic system reside on to the minimum lot size required by the township zoning standards and give the home to the tenants for, say, a dollar. The remaining parcel or parcels could be added as park property to Scout Park. This then allows the tenant to remain at the home. I do need direction from the city councils what you'd like to do regarding this. We do have about six months, but I'd like some direction at some point.
If we take it back, then we're going to have to pay, right, to either tear it down or get it up to code?
If, well-
I don't know why you can get it up to code though. Why would we kick them out and then rerun it to somebody else?
Well, that's the thing. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't recommend rerunning the home.
No, right.
The, if you let them stay there, I know the insurance carrier in the past has made issues about it. We may have to do that. Why would we use tax, I mean, what they pay in rent compared to what the possible upgrades are going to be, it's going to be a lot more than what they're paying in rent. I have a hard time using tax dollars for those upgrades for a home that the city doesn't have use for. That, that-
Been there for four decades. Every repairs are there.
Right. That said, do you, you know, do you find a way to let them stay there and write it off? I-
I think if we do stay there, we need to get out of the landlord business completely. That's not on our purview at all. And item two, I would personally not want to sell anything that close to the Scout property after all the work we did to keep it from turning into condos a few years ago. Scout property is important. It gets used a lot. And I don't want something going next to it that's going to be detrimental to anything they're doing over there.
But you could just turn it over to the park. You could do that. That's an option. Could split the, you can split the other parcel.
And then what do we do with the third parcel?
You don't even have to, just take the one, take the two's part.
You could split and give them both to the park?
Yeah, you just may, you just split the house and the septic from one and just give the rest to the park. You could do that too. You don't have to do three parcels. It was just an option.
That bothers my mind is how we came to inherit this property on the first floor.
I tried to find out, I was around, obviously, 10 years ago when the lease was renewed. And I know Mr. Dietzel and Sandy and they were very concerned that they were going to be kicked out. Their, their side of the story is when they moved into the house, it was very disheveled and they made it a livable place. I wasn't able to find out why the city started renting to them in 1979. I couldn't find anybody that could give me an accurate answer on that. This is one of those things that's ending up in our lap again. When, in defense of previous councils, when they agreed to rent it to them for 10 years, there's some pretty good language in there. I think Dick Wynn helped. So that the only people who could rent were, was that couple. And I think that if we did something, I kind of like the idea of splitting off the parcel that the house and the septic tank are in and, and getting, what do we take to bring it up to code so that we could just let them have it for a nominal fee? And then, then we decide what the other two pieces of property we want to add to the park or which?
You, I think we open ourselves up to two problems if we, number one, we're the council that displaced 40-year residents. And number two, we inherit a huge problem as far as what to do with the next. It's going to cost taxpayer money to tear it down. It's going to cost taxpayer money to fix it up. And then we're right back in the landlord business. So I would be supportive of-
And I think we could, we can word the sale to the point that it stops with the two of them. In other words, if one of them passed away and the other person got involved with somebody else, it can't just go on and on or?
I don't know. You have something for that, right, Sue?
Yes, I do have something that was emailed to city manager Mike Burns. And I'll read that into record. I would like to voice my concern with your comments on 990 North Washington. I do not have an objection to merging part of this property into the Boy Scout area, but I do object to this property being sold for $1. In order to establish a minimum fair market value for exhibit A of the 990 North Washington property, I am offering the city $20,000 cash. No inspections required, just a clean deed. My personal opinion is this property, exhibit A, should be put out for bid and sold to the highest bidder. If you would like an offer of purchase drawn up and a deposit made, just let me know the format you would like. I'm requesting this communication to be part of public record. Respectfully, William Thompson, 720 Hillside Court, Lowell machine.
Well, that's a whole new thing. I think personally that this is a five council member discussion, not a three. So if there's no objections, I would hope that we table it until the other two get back here. Fair?
Fair.
Okay. And since this is, then that's table. There, it looks like there's a lot to unpack there.
Yes.
Alright. Board of mission reports. Cliff?
The chamber had a couple new board members. Ian Demming is from Edward Jones. And a new old board member, Betsy Davidson, is back on the board. And they were discussing the awards. I think everybody pretty much knows they're given a lot of brick awards. There's been some tremendous growth. Baker Benton, Key Heights, Key Vista, Impact Church, King Milling, the McDonald's, the Kent County Youth Fairs being recognized as a nonprofit. And River Valley Credit Union is going to get a nod. And of course, Mark and Teresa Munt are being honored as the persons of the year.
Well deserved.
Yes.
Good. Jim?
The harbor board met last week and we set our schedule for 2020. They'll be coming and asking for some funding from us real soon. I don't know exactly what that amount is, but we're looking forward to that. And then just a reminder, on February 7th, LCTV fund is the deadline to get your request in.
Good. Now, fire authority was, election of officers was tabled due to a tie vote. Going to meet with Tim Wynnback and the fire chief next week to talk about the next equipment purchase coming forward. That'll be the county truck. So then I'll have to shake out its cycle. So you get your name on the list and then every X amount of years, you get that county truck either replaced or buy it. So we're going to talk about that. We're meeting with Lou Bender. Fire authority is next Thursday. Vision was today. Talked about going forward, what we're going to do with the water with Lowell Township. We already started talking about the next community cleanup. Let's talk about showboat stuff that we handled tonight. And that's pretty much it. it. Any discussion or questions on any of our monthly reports? Mike Burns, City Managers report.
Okay. Mayor, City Council. We did try something a little bit different for tonight's meeting. We did put this meeting on Facebook Live, on the city's Facebook page. I don't know how good the video, the audio turned out, or the video, but we're just trying it, and we'll see if we can improve it as we go along. Monday, we had our first session of labor negotiations with the police union. Thought it went well, but we're still working on things, but we'll, hopefully, we can come to some resolution relatively soon. Want to congratulate the months, Mark and Teresa, on the Community People of the Year. As we know, Teresa was a former employee of the city for many years, and Mark also was a employee and contractor with the city for many years as well. I've been spending a lot of time last week addressing a lot of the items for the unity closing and all of the items with the DNR that we have to, that we have to clear up with them, so I've been working on that. Last Wednesday, I attended the Grand Valley Metro Council Technical Advisory Committee meeting. They make approvals as to the Transportation Improvement Plan, where you can get road funding. I was pleased to inform that we did, we did get recommendation to be added to the Transportation Improvement Plan for the Small Urban Project on Foreman Street. The total project cost to repave that street was about $133,000, and I believe we requested 80% of that, so it's still subject to approval by M.D.O., but I think we're on the path to have that, have that addressed later this summer when we do the sewer work for that. Also, just a reminder that we will be meeting Lou Bender on Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday. He will be there at 5:30. I will be there at 5:00. And also, just to remind, just to let the council know, the March 12th, I will be gone from March 12th to March 30th, birth of my child, and Steve Buco, Chief Buco, will be handling the, my role at that March 16th, the council meeting. And that's all I have.
You going to make it back?
We'll see. My form, yeah, you take care.
First question you brought in, Foreman, the $133,000, do you have that budgeted to repair that road and that construction, or is the 80 in there?
We didn't budget it because that was a project that we really, we were going to put into budget for next fiscal year for 21, but it was, we were.
Do we have enough to pick up that other 20%?
Yeah, it'll come out of the sewer font. It'll come out of the sewer font. We do have.
Any other questions for Mike? Sue, anything for the appointments?
No, I have nothing.
All right. Council comments. Mr. Yankovic?
I read an article in the latest Michigan Municipal League about cities that have been cyber attacked, and certainly made me appreciate our decision to spend some money in that regard.
Would you mind if I give a quick update about that?
Sure.
Actually, Cor ICOM is at the Lowell Light and Power office as we speak. I'm going back there after this meeting. They've done a ton of failover tests. I'm not going to go through a list. I actually don't have it in front of me. They have all three servers commissioned. They're in the process of transitioning the different servers we currently have. Lowell Light and Power has like an AMI smart meter server, our database server, a SCADA server, all to these new machines. The city will then be next. They're hoping to wrap up Lowell Light and Power's work mid-February, to the end of February, have the city done by the end of the first quarter. So hopefully, in the next two-ish months, everything will be transitioned to the new IT infrastructure. They said it's extremely fast. It's working better than they even anticipated, and they're going to have all the backups for cybersecurity protection, off-site, in the cloud, that we could ever need. If we do get attacked, it was just destiny, but we're doing everything we can to prevent a cyber attack, so.
Good?
Yeah.
Mr. Salzweedl?
I don't have anything to say.
So, back to you.
That's late on Washington adjournment, 7:35.
Support.
All those favorites thinking about by saying hi.
I.
opposed adjourn.